Good evening. You can please take your seats, we have a quorum. Welcome to the Special Fall Town Meeting, Monday evening, October 28th, 2024. Air Massachusetts. I'd like to begin by putting some introductions. To my right, Chris Tavares. The Vice Chair of the Board of Select, the Select Board. Sean Copeland. Current Chairman of the Select Board. Robert Pontrion, our Town Manager. To my left, Susan Copeland, Town Clerk. Jonathan Krantz and Ken Diskin, Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Board. And I'm Jeff Tillitson. This. Oh, I'm sorry. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd also like to introduce the Attorney for this evening. Greg, there you are, Greg. He moved. Greg Corbom. The limits to the floor this evening are the red seats in front. Other individuals admitted to the meeting, to the floor, are Town Department Heads and other employees who have business on today's warrant. Voting members are to sit in the seats in front of the aisles across the rear of the auditorium. If you would like to speak, please come to one of the microphones on the floor to address the meeting. When you address the meeting, please state your name and address. I've just also been informed that we have a quorum this evening for the meeting. Thank you. May I ask you all to rise to your pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Absent any objections this evening, I also dispense with the reading of the articles as they appear in the warrant. I don't think you guys want me reading six pages of articles, right? What's that? I'm sorry. Please do. I'm going to ask Town Clerk to read the chart of the warrant.
Town of Air Special Annual Fall Town Meeting Warrant. Air Shirley Regional High School Auditorium, 141 Washington Street, Air Massachusetts, 01432, Monday, October 28th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Middlesex SS. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Air qualified to vote in Town Elections and Affairs to meet at the auditorium in the Air Shirley Regional High School located at 141 Washington Street, Air Massachusetts on Monday, the 28th day of October, 2024, at 7:00 in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles. Hereof, fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereof to the Town Clerk before the date appointed for said meeting. Given out of our hands this first day of October, AD 2024. Sean C. Copeland, Chair. Christopher E. Tavares, Vice Chair. Janice L. Livingston, Clerk. A true copy attests Susan E. Copeland, Town Clerk, dated October 4th, 2024. As directed in the foreboring warrant, I have this date posted three attested copies in three public places, one of which was the Town Hall at least 14 days before said meeting, all as herein directed. Samuel A. Goodwin, Jr., Constable, dated October 4th, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Perk. Adoptions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 54B, the prudent investor rule. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of GL, Chapter 44, Section 54B, to allow town trust funds to be invested in accordance with General Law, Chapter 203C, the so-called prudent investor rule, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Copeland.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54B, to allow town trust funds to be invested in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 203C, the so-called prudent investor rule, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Seconded. Motion in a second. We have a neat discussion? Seeing none? Need a simple majority? How do you vote?
Aye.
Oppose? We have a majority. Thank you. Article II. To rescind unissued borrowing balances. To see if the town will vote to rescind the following amounts that have been authorized for, to be borrowed by voters, by votes at previous town meetings as listed herein, which are no longer needed for the purposes for which they were initially approved. The Police Department Radio Coverage Improvement Product, unissued balance of $66. DPW Stormwater Streetsweeper, the unissued balance of $2,185. The Building Department Inspector Vehicle, unissued balance of $6,310. And a DPW Highway Lift, Hook Lift Truck for $1,013. Or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Tavares.
I move that the town vote to rescind the amounts contained in Article II that have been authorized to be borrowed by votes at the previous town meetings, which are no longer needed for the purposes for which they were initially approved, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article II? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with majority. Article III. Excuse me, the motion passes unanimously. Article III, Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half, for the purpose of establishing a stormwater utility fee fund as an enterprise fund of the town effective fiscal year 2026, or take any action thereon or in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Copeland.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 54, Section, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half, for the purposes of establishing a stormwater utility fee fund as an enterprise fund of the town effective fiscal year 2026, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. I believe. We have a presentation on this. Dan Von Skelkwick, DPW.
Okay. Good evening. Try to get this mic right. Okay. So I made pretty much a much shorter presentation than most of you may have already seen from the work group that worked on this, so should be brief. Okay, Cindy, let's go to the next slide. Or sorry, Samantha up there, right? Thank you. So just the town, the town meeting articles in brief, what they would do. Article III, that essentially establishes a stormwater enterprise fund, which would be effective in FY 2026. And Article IV allows for the funding of that stormwater enterprise fund and also other items, conducting abatements, liens, et cetera. So that's basically the two articles that would approve a stormwater enterprise fund. One thing to note, as we've, the work group was doing outreach, there was board and committee vote in support of this enterprise fund for the town's consideration. And the Finance Committee, Planning Board, and Conservation Commission all voted support on the respective dates shown on the slide here. So, next slide, please. So going back, there was a stormwater advisory work group put together under the Select Board, compromising many members, residents, Planning Board member Jonathan Krantz, Janice Livingston from the Select Board, unfortunately she couldn't be here tonight, Jin Hong, Residence Finance Committee, Beth Sudemeyer, Resident, James Carhartt was a business rep with us, Barbara Tierney from Finance Manager, Heather Hampson, Conservation Agent, myself, and Matt Hernon, the Town Engineer. We also had support from Ty &amp; Bond, our consultant, who has worked on this for several other communities as well. Next slide is the, the work group, public meetings and outreach. So the work group really tried to reach.
Reach as many people as we could. During the process, we had a living timeline that we would update at every meeting and, you know, take advantage of where we could to conduct outreach. But one of the key parts we did was we kept the website as a repository of all the information, the questions, people would come up with frequently asked questions, videos, links to meetings, et cetera. So that's, that's up on the web and may you probably have been there by now, but I just wanted to point that out. Next slide. So here's a list of some of the meetings that the, the work group attended and presented at and received input at. You know, back all the way to September 2023, kind of when this was beginning, was meetings open to the public, that's when the Select Board first met, the work group first met. Board and Committee Presentations, February, the Select Board of 2023, this was before the work group was set up, also in June of '23. And then back in February of this past year, the work group went to various boards and committees, just to give a heads up, hey, this is being considered, here's the potential impacts, here's what we're going to be looking at. And then circling back in September, October of this year, we came back to most of those boards and committees to show the findings that the work group had, had found from this consideration. Next slide. As I kind of mentioned, you know, we tried to get out there with a lot of outreach. You can see the list here, there was public outreach meetings, February of 2024, really a guest speaker at the library, giving a speech about the importance of stormwater, why, you know, what impacts it has on a community. June of '24, Public Input Forum.
August '24, there was a business forum. And then many other outreach items listed below that, including a notification in the tax bills, which go to every property. The work group put together a video, frequently asked questions. I'm not going to read the rest, but we were trying to get as much as we could.
Next slide. So the why now? So this, on this slide here, really the impacts of stormwater and the costs to manage it are really driving this consideration. And, you know, the anticipated impacts of climate change, we saw our neighbors over in Leominster and the pictures on the left, you know.
A major issue, major flooding back in October of 2023, and it devastated their infrastructure, not too far from us. We, luckily, we didn't do too, as bad in that storm. You know, and if those impacts do happen, if we're not maintaining and managing our stormwater infrastructure proactively, then we're going to have issues where a road could be closed if a culvert goes down, things like that. Maintaining transportation transit, economic continuity, we have a lot of industry businesses in town, we don't want to have roads closed, we don't want to have issues with our stormwater infrastructure. So the culverts, we do have 84 culverts in town, and on the bottom right is one of the culverts we're actually looking at right now, Groton School Road Culvert over James Brook, this is on Route 111 as you head out of town toward Groton. But the estimated replacement cost of this one is $3 million, and if you look at the photos, you can see there's a, a stone slab for decking and it's totally fractured through. So, you know, we see things like this, just deferred maintenance, we don't know what we have, it just hasn't been a, it's been a very reactive posture the town has had when facing its stormwater assets. So this is something that, you know, really needs replacement before we have a catastrophic failure. And so we actually have done a temporary repair on that bridge for now, or that culvert, excuse me, as we're seeking to replace. So, and there's, there's much more of that in town. Okay, next slide.
So why are we considering an enterprise fund?
Well, there's a few main reasons. So I put a comparison chart together here of a general fund, so that's through the taxes versus an enterprise fund. And if we fund stormwater through the general fund, Air's finances are pretty healthy, the town does a good job with that, so the town isn't taxing to its maximum tax levy at this time, so there is some room in the tax levy. But, you know, sustainably, is that the right thing to do long-term in the future and compete with other, other things such as the school, which need a lot of funding? The simplicity of the general fund, you know, it's really easy, we just, you know, you don't have to put together the stormwater fund and have the billing set up and, and be dealing with abatements and credits, things like that that would come with it, it's just, here's what we need for funding? Okay. Comes out of the general fund. So down in the enterprise fund category, so one of the reasons to consider is equity. So similar to like a water and sewer enterprise fund, you pay by your usage, you pay through the water meter read. With a stormwater fund, we, we set it up to pay by usage by impervious area. Why impervious area? It has the most impact on the stormwater quality and the impacts it has to the Town of Air and our waterways, et cetera. So equity wise, so the higher impervious area properties, the way that this is set up, would pay more because they have more impacts to the stormwater quality in town. And lower impervious area properties would pay less. Transparency, with an enterprise fund in general, you know exactly what you're spending on stormwater, that's what that budget's set up for. It would be a dedicated revenue service, you charge a fee, that revenue comes in, it takes care of all the needs for stormwater management. Financing large projects with significant debt, so like we just saw the Groton School Road Culvert project, a project like that would obviously, if it was in the general fund, have to go to a debt override, a prop two and a half vote at, at a future town meeting if we were in the general fund. With a enterprise fund, it's more sustainable, we can focus and project into the future in debt projects and, and look at what our rates are to make sure we're covering that. And this, all this process was looked at by the, by the stormwater work group as we, as we did the process. Sustainability. In this, in an enterprise fund, you'll have savings for emergencies, be prepared for climate impacts by having a proactive posture, as well as meeting regulatory requirements. And additionally, and this is likely to come up in the future as we get stricter regulations from the EPA and our MASTEP, is incentivizing stormwater treatment on private property. So the ability to do that through a credit policy. So if you have one big parking lot somewhere with no stormwater treatment, it gives incentive for a property to, to put that in so they get a credit. Next slide. This is just a snapshot of the stormwater fund, kind of the needs and the funding level that the work group settled on. So Air's estimated stormwater infrastructure replacement value is $90 million, so it is a significant asset to the town, which needs to be maintained properly. The work group recommends funding at a proactive level of service at $700,000 per year, and that the work group went through several iterations to get to this number. I won't get into the details now, but basically out of the, the current stormwater fund, you can see in this table compared to a proposed stormwater utility fund, the difference in the funding level, the management style, I've been mentioning reactive versus proactive. Capital projects, right now, through the current funding, general fund, we're really only tackling small projects, spot repairs, replacements. With a capital, the projects through an enterprise fund, we'd be able to, to do more small, medium-sized projects. As far as culvert goes, right now, only very small culverts every couple of years, but with the proposed enterprise fund, it would be smaller culverts yearly and larger culverts every couple of years. Pipe maintenance and inspection, we really are very lacking in this, until we did our stormwater asset management plan a few years ago, we, we had, you know, a bad, bad records and bad understanding of what we have. So we've really been only doing emergency work, but we would have a yearly program of maintenance and inspection for our pipes. And I did mention this ability to meet MS4 permit requirements, those are our EPA, MASTEP regulatory requirements, it's much more likely with an enterprise fund to do that. Sustainable, yes. And the credit available for a stormwater utility fund, yes. So we can go to the next slide. So just a handful of images from around town, and this is kind of how we are now, being in sort of a reactive posture. This was up on Pleasant Street, just past Taft Street, we, we had some flooding in that area and we discovered that the drain pipe was compromised, and then we couldn't even find where the outlet went. So basically, we're figuring things out as we go and doing an emergency replacement project, so that was done back in 2023. And we have actually a couple of them lined up now on Bligh Street and Linden Court as well. Next slide, please. This is an image of a culvert replacement, and I kind of highlighted in the bottom right, you can see here, total loss of the pipe bottom, and, and we, we see this is pretty common in these corrugated metal pipes, which we have a lot of in town, but this was a replacement that was actually done a few years ago, but this is probably about as big as we can get on a replacement based on our, our current funding level. And I should say, through the, the stormwater asset management plan, we did identify, you know, a third of the culverts in that, that inspection were in the medium to high deterioration range, so these assets, the maintenance has been deferred on them and it's catching up. So the next slide, please. So what's it going to cost? That's this slide. So the work group's recommendation is for all single-family residential properties, the cost would be $95 per year for the enterprise fund fee. Doesn't matter if the, the impervious area on the property is 1,000 square feet or 4,000 square feet, it's always $95 for a single-family residential. All the other properties in town that are non-single-family residential, like your commercial, industrial, would be charged a fee proportional to the property's impervious area. And down on the bottom, it's probably hard to see, it was my footnote, is the stormwater rate, it would be subject to an annual and public review process by the rate review committee, likely, that's what I would expect, with recommendations made to the Select Board at a public hearing, and that's exactly what's done for the water and sewer funds at this time. And that's the presentation for tonight. Special thanks to the work group members for the over-year-long process. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Von Skelkwick.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Nearing.
Lori Nearing. Thank you for that presentation, Dan, that was really helpful. Of course, I'm in support of this, $95 is very reasonable, these infrastructure issues need our support. I have one quick question, one longer question, so I'll start with a quick one. You said one of the issues is to be equitable about the charges, so I am curious what the maybe three largest commercial, private businesses are in Air that are going to be charged this fee, and what is that charge going to be? And I'm thinking Guilford is, well, the auto unloading facility that's now owned by Pan Am is probably the largest?
Yes, yeah, Pan Am, they owned two of the largest facilities, I believe, without having it right in front of me, and I believe CPF was, was kind of next on the list. Do you remember the fee on those properties, Matt? No. I don't have that with me now. But we could, actually, we could pull up the property viewer from the website, if you can go to the website.
Can you just give us like the formula that you're using? Is, is it a, take the square feet and multiply by something?
Yeah, so the way it works is, we, we basically count equivalent residential units. One equivalent residential unit is 3,200 square feet of impervious area. So we, if we know the impervious area of a property, then we can calculate the fee. I don't know if Samantha can do that, or I could pull it up on my phone real quick. So we can go to the Boards and Committees and Stormwater. Yep. And then if you scroll down in the middle, there'll be online parcel viewer. So click okay. So this is, this parcel viewer was put together by our consultant, and it has, it has been scrubbed pretty well to get us down to what we, what we know for impervious areas. So head, do you know where Pan Am? No. Willow Road? It's that dark blue, dark blue, yeah, click that. It doesn't like coming up. Anyway, it shows on the right-hand side, 380 to 390 equivalent residential units, so let's see if it's, if it was 380, it's about a $36,000 fee for the year.
Okay. Okay. So, so the math is pretty much equivalent, charging the same amount per square foot roughly as compared to residential, they're paying the same share?
Yeah, so it's $95 per ERU, residential pays one ERU, single-family residential.
Okay.
And then you just calculate it up from there to how many equivalent residential units. Yep.
Thank you, that's, that's really helpful and interesting. Okay, that was supposed to be the short question. The, the longer question is, so my understanding of stormwater issues also has to do with contaminants that get on our roadways, the oil, the gas, the dog poop, the things that people drop. What you're proposing doesn't really address those things, and I think in most places in Air, our water is not treated at the sewage treatment plant, right? It mostly goes directly into a stream or culvert that goes, without being treated, directly into some body of water that ends up in what we see here. So are those things also going to be addressed by the stormwater plan?
Yeah, so I would say, just to sort of clarify, our wastewater collection system is completely separate from our stormwater collection, storm drain system. So you're right, the storm drain system ends up in our waterways ultimately. I think the way it would be addressed is by having a more robust proactive system, we can do more projects and put in better improvements to, to treat, to get our stormwater quality that's being discharged at a higher quality, rather than just having our, you know, go right into the catch basin, right out into the waterway. We can put in what's called best management practices, a BMP, a treatment, some, some form of treatment before it does that.
So a nature-based kind of solution that allows the water to drain more slowly and get treated as it infiltrates back into the ground?
It would depend on, on the situation, you know, because it's hard when we're retrofitting, but sometimes, like we've done a few rain gardens around town, things like that. You know, we would always consider what we can do to the maximum extent practical when we do the projects. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
John Cattigan, 203 Autumn Ridge Drive. We live in a over-55 condo development that has an engineered stormwater management system, was done by GPR, soils on the side of the roads, flow interceptors, multiple detention basins, all have been engineered. How does the billing affect a condo, which effectively is a, a single building with either six or eight dwelling units in it? That's one question. The other is about credits and how a site with an engineered system already in place would approach this.
Okay. So for the billing, it's very preliminary, but I would anticipate there'd be one bill for a, an HOA in a situation like that, and then the HOA would, would then in turn, you know, get the money from its, you know, its association to pay that. And then for the credits on the site, so the, the credit policy that's been drafted, and, and, you know, keep in mind, these are draft, but, you know, will likely just, these would go to the rate review and then the Select Board ultimately if this were approved. The credit application would have to be filed, would have to be submitted in accordance with the draft credit policy that we have together, even though there's already BMPs there. And that, so that would get submitted, and then that would get reviewed, and then approved, and then there would be a credit put onto the bill. It would have to meet specific criteria that are in that credit policy that, that we have, so we'd have to just look, you know, in detail and close. But yeah.
I would assume that we could consult with you at some future time to review the site and try to meet your requirements.
Oh, yes.
Subtle requirements.
Yes.
So can I assume that each, each of the dwelling units is rather small compared to the typical house? I think about 1,500 square feet, something like that. Would they all be charged, or $95 per unit?
No, so it's, it's just based off the impervious area of the, the condo complex, of that, I guess, of that property.
Okay.
So if it's all one big property, you know, I mean, we could look at it later, but it's, you know, it's, it's not per household, it's impervious area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right.
Same, kind of the same question, Frederick Meshna.
Thank you.
21 Prospect Street. You mentioned single-family, you mentioned commercial, what about two-family and three-family homes?
So yeah, two-family, three-family, they So yeah, two-family, three-family, they fit also under the non-single-family residential. So anything that's not single-family residential, multifamily, yes.
Impervious area.
It's just based off of impervious area, not based on the number of units.
And you determine that by measuring it? You going around measuring everything in town?
Yes, so yeah, you see the map up here, we've put together, so we use a process, this near map process, and then actually physically, somebody is looking at this map and measuring it, very similar to an assessor, to do that, to make sure a property is correct.
So could that increase the, can you roughly give me an idea if you have a quarter acre of land and one-eighth of that is, you're counting the house too and asphalt, right?
Yes, yep, the roof and the asphalt.
Okay, so if I had a quarter acre land and half of it was impervious, can you give me a bump?
So that'd be around 10,000 square feet, so that's about three ERUs.
So 300.
Yeah, just under 300.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Over here, please. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Scott Anderson. I live at 87 Littleton Road.
Yes, can you lean in towards the mic? Thank you.
Scott Anderson, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
87 Littleton Road, Highway 2A. So the question I have is, and I'm not here necessar, I'm in agreement with most, with what we're talking about here, but it's making an assumption that as a residence, a single-family residence, that you are in some way contributing to runoff of your impervious component to your property, or any component of your property into the stormwater system. Is there any allowance to be able to justify getting a, I don't know what the term was here, some form of credit? There are those of us, I know, that are in town, that property is actually sloped away from the road. I've actually had to have the state come out and make adjustments to the driveway because of actual runoff coming off of Highway 2A and creating a three-foot pond in my front yard, so.
Yeah, so.
It's not that I'm trying to duck, you know, providing support to the overall infrastructure of the town, but if I'm not even contributing to the cause of the issues.
Yeah, so it's, it doesn't, we're not talking about water strictly going into the road or into a town-owned structure. Basically, impervious area, it's going to make the stormwater travel faster to its ultimate location, you know, if we had a really big storm, it's going to flow to the nearest waterway, so it'll impact that. And I know that there may be a case like that where you don't feel like you're impacting, but you use, you know, everyone uses the roads and the culverts in town as well, so it's kind of part of that as well. So that's the intent behind it.
That's fine. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
James McGowan from 16 Pond Street. I had a question, if you have a multifamily like I do, and there's so many, and it's like 100-plus years old, there's so many houses in town that are two, three times the size of mine, how do you work that into what the fees would be?
So you're talking about multifamily or single-family?
Yeah, multifamily compared to, I see so many single families.
Right.
So much larger than my little house, my little place.
So in general, just, you know, simplicity, if we start measuring impervious area on every single-family residential in town, it's going to get really tight and itty-gritty, and it's going to be difficult to differentiate, and you know, it'll add a ton of administrative work for the town. So this is really, you know, a lot of the communities have set it up this way for simplicity and for the way for it to work well. I think that's maybe the best way I can answer it.
Do we have a estimate, like what a three-family would, you know, cost compared to the 95?
It always depends on the impervious area of the site. So I've seen, you know, most of them that I've seen, when I've used the property viewer, have been a little less. It wouldn't be like, you know, three families, 95 times three. Usually there's less impervious area when you have, you know, denser construction with apartments or condo-type units. So you usually get less impervious area with those tighter spaces.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Conley?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Pauline Conley, Cambridge Street. Hello, Dan.
Hi.
Easy questions, I promise. As I understand the ERU, it covers 3,200 square feet of a residential unit. Excuse me, is that correct?
Yeah, 3,200 square feet of impervious area.
And that 3,200 square feet is also used to calculate the impervious surfaces for small businesses and large businesses, such as the railroad, as we recently discussed. Larger businesses may do stormwater management and obtain a 50% credit on their fee, if I understand the regular, proposed regulations. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the $36,000 the railroad may pay would be maybe 18,000 if they had stormwater management. Do you know if the Pan Am has stormwater management now?
Yes, on some of their properties, they do. And so as part of that $700,000 fee, you saw, there was a factor used, a conservative factor, for anticipated credits to come from existing stormwater treatment.
And that would be true for all our SIUs, Catania, CPF, Nisoya, you can add more to the list than I can probably add. My concern is, where does the other 50%, how is the other 50% paid? Is it going to be on the taxpayers, the residents, and that $95 average fee per ERU? Or will it be a subsidy from the general fund? None of this is explained in anything I've read, and if it's there, I apologize, I missed it.
So, yeah, it would end up being input into that fee, the $95 per ERU. So that's why we've used a conservative value of 7% to, you know, bring that number down as the anticipated credits that we expect to see, and it's kind of based on what other communities have seen. So it's, you know, and given a little buffer as well. So that's kind of how it was set up at this point, but that's where it would move to, the funding.
And tonight, we're only being asked to authorize the fund, not to authorize the funding. Is that correct?
So, yeah, Article 3 and 4. Article 3 sets up the enterprise fund. Article 4 allows for the collection of fees. It doesn't specify a number, so that's right.
Because none of the regulations or the fees have actually been presented or approved by the selectmen, am I correct?
It hasn't formally, because there isn't an enterprise fund yet.
Right.
But they are in support of what the work that has been done, so, right.
I agree, they support it, but that $95 fee could become 125 before we're done. We don't know yet because of the credits and possible abatements.
I mean, I think what the work groups work, we are pretty confident in the number we have, so I wouldn't anticipate it to change, but, you know, you're right in that there is no exact fee set with the articles, yeah.
When our water fees go down, I'll buy into this a little bit better, but thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Hi, Jonathan Krantz, 46 Washington Street. I was a member of the working group for the Stormwater Utility Fund, and through the moderator to town meeting, I want to clarify some misunderstandings. When we're dealing with the multifamily properties, it's not a matter of counting the units and multiplying that times the ERU. So it could be a 10-family property, it's not 10 ERUs. So it's not 10 times the 95. What it is, is the overall property, what's its impervious area? And you take that impervious area and you divide it by 3,200 square feet, which is the ERU, to arrive at that per-unit cost. So what the HOA might potentially pass down to you is not the same as an ERU or 95. It could be significantly less, depending on the impervious area of the overall complex. Thank you.
Ms. Lavin?
Cindy Lavin, A High Street. Thank you, Jonathan, that helped, but just sort of a philosophical statement. In dealing with affordable housing, we're sort of trying to encourage people to take the large, older houses, maybe create apartments in them, things like that. And so now you're sort of going against that in terms of, why would I have the incentive to cut my property into apartments and create more housing if I'm going to now be in this higher bracket? Just a thought.
I mean, I would think, you know, now you're going to have, so you cut a property down, but you put in more housing, more density on there, you're going to be splitting that cost of whatever the impervious area is more than one way. So, you know, say there's six units, six ways. That'd be my first thought, but.
Over here, please.
Hi, I'm Stan Rosanka, I live on 136 West Main Street. My property is basically at the foot of West Main Street Bridge on the left, and it has quite a few square feet of impervious. The entire property was paid for parking and around the house driving some years ago before I bought it. In my situation, just for example, if you took a five-gallon bucket of water and you dumped it in the top of my driveway next to the street, every drop of that flows down into my backyard, which is basically a bowl. So I have a lot of impervious, but it seems that it would have no effect whatsoever on the water entering the system.
Oh, yeah, I think this kind of goes back to the similar question earlier. We all still use the roadways and the infrastructure in town, so, you know, the intent is to pay in for that, even necessarily if there could be a case, which would be hard for me to, you know, fathom whether there is, if you had a large storm, where it wouldn't have some kind of impact somewhere by having stormwater runoff. So it's kind of along those lines, I think, in those types of scenarios with the intent of this. And I mean, that would give a good opportunity for some treatment there, but I mean, infiltration, which is great, especially if it's nearby, you know, one of our groundwater, public water supply wells, if it's nearby there, infiltration is awesome, you know, if we can promote that further too through this process, which is what would happen, yeah.
So hypothetically, if I get a large bill on account of my impervious area, I would have no recourse for a review?
You'd have to put in, you'd have to meet the credit policy, the items within there, which would be stormwater treatment.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Can I address that question?
Please do.
Thank you, good evening through you, Mr. Moderator. So I'm hearing a lot of sort of very specific, you know, how does this apply to me, and could I be exempt if I have this situation that my neighbor doesn't? And what we will see in the next article is that by accepting the provisions of Chapter 83, those particular sections, one of those sections allows for an application for abatement. And so if you have some specific reason why you believe that your fee has not been calculated properly, either through some math error or because you don't think that it should apply to you in the same way, then your recourse would be to apply to the select board for an abatement. And the select board would have an opportunity to consider your arguments and your information, and then decide whether or not you qualify for an abatement. And if you are aggrieved by the decision of the select board, then you have a further right of appeal to the appellate tax board. So, you know, what's happening here is that the fee itself is, has to try to, you know, encompass the entire town, and it has to be done in a way that most approximately, you know, fits everyone in a fair way. But of course, there are going to be some people that do not fit into the same bucket as everyone else. And so the remedy for those people would be to file an application for abatement, present your individual circumstances, and then let the select board render a decision. The other thing that is very important for everyone to understand about these two votes is that particularly with Article 3 here, this is simply an accounting vote. So you're not voting tonight whether or not to establish a stormwater fee or to establish a fee of a certain amount. All you're doing is saying that when this fee is assessed, we want to put it aside in this separate account, rather than having it go into the general fund. So it's important to understand that even a no vote under this article may not necessarily mean that there is no stormwater fee. All it means is that if there's a stormwater fee, it will go into the general fund rather than into this more specific, separate accounting mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Corbald. I believe, Ms. Gugino?
Yes, Jessica Gugino, 8 Mountain View Avenue. I'm strongly in favor of this. I just wanted to doubly clarify a few things. So with the one ERU being based on 3,200 square feet, any single-family house, even if they have 10,000 feet, square feet of impervious surface, still pays that one ERU, correct?
Correct.
Or if you had a multifamily house with, say, 10 units, that was 3,200 square feet or less impervious, that would still pay one ERU, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other clarification, Pauline mentioned, say, the railroad parking, if they, you know, ballpark would be charged 36,000, but they got abatements down to 18,000, there's no need for the town to make up the other 18,000. It's not something that would have to, that residents would then have to make up that difference. You're just using this as a way to build up a particular fund, right?
Yeah, I mean, that is true, Jess. So, yeah, you would build up the fund, and then if, you know, if there was a significant credit that might impact the rate, we'd have to evaluate that at that point.
Right, but there's no sense of, oh, they should have paid 36,000, let's get the other 18,000 from everybody else initially at least.
It would have to be evaluated at the time, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Maxson?
Ruth Maxson Schultz, 17 Task Street. It sounds to me like we're taking something that's work, working, only making it real messy for everybody, although there may be some benefits and stuff, it sounds like it's going to be just too complicated, it's not too complicated to figure out, but just complicates everybody else's life. And if it's working by keeping the money in a general fund, we all have, we all have to have the money taken out of the general fund for certain things, why should it be of special interest for some others and some of not? We all should pay into it. And I think just why makes everything difficult? Thank you.
Move the question. Have a motion? I'm asking you to come forward to the microphone to address. Pauline, would you like to speak?
Just one quick comment, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Pauline Conley again. In response to Jessica's comment, let's assume, shall we, that the credits for the SIUs and the larger companies that are able to afford to install the stormwater management programs designed by the EPA, if there is a shortfall in the revenue from the fund, how will it be paid? Subsidy from the general fund, or will the rates be adjusted upward?
I think we're, you know, deep in the hypothetical, but, you know, retained earnings would probably be the first thing you would look at, which is what we do now for our enterprise funds if there is a shortfall, and then after that, you'd have to look elsewhere for the funds, such as the general fund, but very hypothetical.
It is hypothetical, Dan, and you know I attend these meetings as often as possible. We are always subsidizing something from the general fund, so to say that it won't happen is disingenuous, shall I? It's always a possibility, these, the residents will end up paying more as we continue to do on our property taxes, our water and sewer bills, and coming forward with stormwater. do on our property taxes, our water and sewer bills, and coming forward with stormwater. That's not to say I'm taking a position one way or the other, but let's not disillusion everybody.
I mean, I think it's good that the town has the rate review committee to vet the passed.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Conley.
Hi, Dan Gleason, 24 Howard Street. I have a motion to move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Have a motion to move the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Brings us to the vote. Article, Article 2. I'm sorry, Article 3. Looking right at it. A simple majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Article 3 passes with a majority vote. Article 4, Stormwater Utility Fee Collections, Abatements, and Leans. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 83, 16A to 16F inclusive, which statutes approve, which statutes provide for a method of collection of stormwater utility rates, or take any action thereon or in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. DeVars?
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 83, Section 16A to 16F inclusive, which statutes provide for a method of collection of stormwater utility rates, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Seconded. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Do we have discussion on this article? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Article 4 passes with the majority.
Article 5, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Adoption of MBTA Multifamily Overlay District. This is why I asked if I don't have to read it, guys. We do have a presentation. As you can see, our town planner Danny Ruiz has taken up station in the front of the, in the front of the room. Mr. Moderator? Mr. Copeland, thank you.
I move that the town vote to amend the town of air zoning by law by adding a new section 320-8.7, MBTA Multifamily Overlay District, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Seconded. Thank you.
Mr. Ruiz, your show. Thank you. So I'm not sure if everyone knows, but the state did pass a law which requires, which was actually called the Multifamily Zoning Act under Section 3A, which requires towns that are MBTA communities, an MBTA community is a community that has a rail stop from the MBTA station, or MBTA adjacent communities that are communities that are next to MBTA communities. These are required to pass a district which would allow for multifamily and mixed-use developments to be built. The, this is to encourage the production of housing for different sizes and different types of multifamily access for the new housing, as the state currently has a low stock of housing. There is an issue, obviously, everyone knows that the inventory in the state is pretty low, and there's been a, prices have gone up higher. So this is to really promote the production of multifamily to allow for more lower affordable units. So for, can we go to the first? Thank you. So it's, I already talked about the Section 3A. This is to encourage a variety of housing sizes and types to provide new housing for people with a variety of needs and income levels, and it's also to increase the tax base through the private investment in new housing development. So this will apply to two areas in town. They are close to the MBTA station. It's going to be the West Air Village, as well as the Downtown Park Street. And these are our two Form-Based Code districts, which currently meet the requirements of what the state requires for these zones. We require 15 units per acre in this area, and since the current zoning that we meet, the only thing we really need to change in this area was to create an overlay district, which would allow for the mechanism for the building of these units. It falls under its own type of bylaw, and the reasoning behind that is so that, for example, the Form-Based Code will still be the underlying zoning district, so you could still apply under that zone and use all the uses that are fall, that fall under our Table of Use Regulations, as well as the overlay district, which would be just above, you know, picture it as above the other underlying district, but it's a separate application. And so they would apply under this, these two sections, if you could go to the next page. And so this bylaw makes it so that there's its own process specifically just for the MBTA overlay district for multifamily and mixed-use developments, to promote more multifamily. This process is called the MOD Development Plan Approval, and it's similar to Site Plan Approval, which currently we have in place for any other project that meets those requirements. The planning board would do the review of it. Within this section, special permits would not be required, and there are specific requirements that are going to be referenced within the bylaw in which the applicant must comply with. So affordable housing, off-street parking, other overlay districts, as well as site development standards. And some of those site development standards that these applicants would have to comply with would be, and would be reviewed by the planning board, site connectivity, parking lot, driveway, aisle design, landscape plantings, vehicle access, lighting, building mechanics, dumpsters, stormwater management, and building design and location. So it's very similar to Site Plan Review, which we currently have. But this makes it a more expeditious process for multifamily so that we, in these two districts, we can allow for more multifamily to be built. If you can go to the next page? Compliance. So the, since we are an MBTA community, we are, under the state law, we have to be in compliance by the end of this year, by December 31st of this year. In March of 2023, the town did receive interim compliance, which just meant that the requirements that we have for our zoning districts met the requirements of what the 3A zoning act needed. And so the next mechanism to kind of move that forward is the overlay district. Once that is in place, we would do an application to the state with all this information showing that the town did approve the MBTA overlay district. The, all the other information has already been approved during the interim compliance. So it would be quite an easy process for the town to be in compliance with that. And so if we were not in compliance by the end of this year, I'm sure everyone has heard about Milton and some of the issues that there's suing the state with. If we were not to be in compliance with the state law, we would lose out on a lot of different types of grants that the town applies for and receives. So a list of them are the Mass Works Grants, the Housing Works Grants, the EOHLC Housing Choice Grants, and state funding under Local Capital Projects Fund. And I have, on the next page, I have a list of some of those grants that we receive. So these are just some of the bigger grants that we receive and have, that we've applied for and received throughout, since 2019. We've received more prior to that and within those years, but these are just the bigger ones. So if everyone knows the West Main Street project that was done a couple of years ago, that was a $3 million Mass Work Grant that was applied for and received by the town, that type of project, we would lose the ability to apply for and lose those grants. Some other additional ones are the CDBG, which is what the community development uses for helping seniors fix some of their houses. So we'd lose the ability to apply for those grants as well. Some of the others were like Park Street Roadway Improvement, which was 108,000. And then, so there's some additional, there's a lot more grants that are not on this list, but these are just the bigger ones. We also did just recently receive in October a $300,000 Housing Choice Grant from, for the Devens Jurisdictional Framework Disposition Study. We, and we have to be in compliance with the MBTA to actually be able to use that money, to actually receive it. So there's a lot of, there's a big effect if we don't, aren't in compliance with this. We would really lose a lot of money that the town does apply for and does receive. Go to the next page? Oh, nope, that's it. That's the first one.
Thank you, Danny. Any discussion on this article? Ms. Salter?
Hello, Faith Salter, 10 Winthrop. Have you got a map? I love a map.
Yes. It's, so the zoning map is also being updated, but it's Article 9, or Article 8.
Samantha, any chance?
Yeah, can you just go to Article 8?
Could we see it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I have another zoomed-in area, but this is the overall zoning map. You'll see on the next page, the areas that hatched in red and outlined in red, those are the two areas that we are calling the MBTA Overlay Districts. They encompass our current Form-Based Code district, and so anything that is currently zoned as Form-Based Code, the overlay district will encompass it.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Jim Ferry, 1 Victor Drive. I notice on the voting of the planning board, one dissension. Maybe the chair could elaborate as to why there was one vote against for far.
I really don't feel comfortable for speaking for another member of the board. That member chose not to be here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. At this microphone, sir?
Scott Peterson, 30 Holly Ridge Road. I'm curious the number of units that you're targeting. I know Shirley has a target of 650 units, and I didn't know if we had a number in mind or something that we need to comply.
So the zoning is just to allow for up to, they're looking for up to 1,000, but there's no way that we'll actually get to that point. So there's actually, I know everyone just, so it's just to allow for the ability to be built, but when you actually look at the properties that are within these zones, the constraints that are with, on these properties, wetlands, other lay, other overlay districts, the property sizes, there's no way we'll actually build that many, and it's over several, several years to full build out, even if we were to try to build all, on all these properties. So this would encompass like some of the vacant properties on West Main Street, you know, like the Devens Plaza. These bigger properties you could definitely develop, but a lot of these properties are single-family homes too. So there's really not full capability of getting anywhere near 1,000.
Okay. Do you currently have an idea, 500, 250?
Do I? I mean, looking at the, so everyone knows on the West, the DMG project that was previously proposed before the planning board, that one had 172 units, and that was three of the largest properties on West Main Street. So, I mean, if you were to encompass all of that and including the Downtown Park Street, close to maybe, it would be a guess, so maybe 400 at most? And that would be over a long period of time.
Ms. Schmollerberger?
Marilyn Schmollerberger, 2 Calvin Street. Danny, can you just, I'm a little confused by the overlaying districts.
Yeah.
So we have our basic bylaws, which govern height restrictions, and then if we overlay this with the MBTA, does the MBA take precedence, in other words?
No. So the way it works is it still would have to, anything within the MBTA overlay district would still have to comply with the standards of the Form-Based Code. So all the height requirements, all of the building development standards that are within our Form-Based Code on Chapters 10.4 and 10.5, they would still have to meet those. It's just a different application and review.
Okay. I also have a question about the exclusions. Like a developer could pay $10,000 not to do an affordable unit.
Excuse me. That's out of the, that's, I believe you're asking about developer payments in lieu of building, which is the next article.
Oh, okay. All right. I'll hold my question then, thanks.
Thank you. On this side, please.
Hi, Kathy Cook, 32 Mountain Laurel Road. I'm just am wondering, if we're bringing in more housing, how is that going to affect all of the other resources that are already taxed due to the hospital being closed?
Due to the, had the hospital being closed?
Yeah, because you're going to bring in more people, you're going to have more people that need medical attention, and now our hospital is gone, but you're asking everyone to vote to be subsidized.
Well, no. So I'm not asking the town to vote on...
Well, you're kind of, it just kind of seems like we're kind of pushing people towards, hey, if we don't vote this way, we don't get the money that is here, because, you know, the state wants us to vote this way.
Excuse me, if I may.
I'm curious.
Yeah, I understand, and I think, so this, just to help clarify, and Mr. Ruiz, fix, if I'm incorrect, just let me know. We're changing a zoning by law to be in compliance with the state. We're not building any units. People can in the future come and build those units, but we're not building any units.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just so that everyone knows, as our bylaws currently exist, since we already currently meet the requirements of 15 units per acre, you could already build as many as that.
Thank you. Mr. Sekman?
Eric Sekman, 7 Church Street. You mentioned that there, there's like they're looking for 1,000, but just based on the space available, we'll never get there. But is there a minimum requirement that the state has, like you have to build or allow a certain number of units?
No, so there's no minimum requirement. It's just putting, allowing to put the zone and the ability to do it, it doesn't mean that it has to be done. Like they don't have to be built.
Thank you. Ms. Withy?
I just had a question about the special permit.
Excuse me? Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Sarah Withy. Is that good? I love it, Grauton Shirley Road.
Thank you, Sarah.
I was just wondering about the special permit. As you were talking, you were saying, so there's no special permit, like, so what happens with the planning board?
So the planning board would still review it, but it's just a different process. It's called the Multifamily Overlay Development Plan. So the reason I said there's no special permits required is in towns across the state, special permits are used almost for the benefit of the, that board sometimes, and it gives them a reason, a reason to be allowed to deny projects because it's a four-to-one supermajority vote, and there's a lot more leeway on reasons why you can deny under special permits. The town is, I mean, the state is looking to remove that to make it easier to get multifamily approved, so that it's not being caught up in certain boards, you know, not wanting development or any kind of, you know, ways like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nearing?
Lori Nearing. Hi, Nev. I want to make sure that I understand the overlay district correctly. It sounds to me like, this is controversial in other towns that don't happen to be tightly housed units like we are. And it sounds like you could have taken those red lines and put them in other places, as long as we have a certain percentage of our population overlaid. We could have, you could have drawn those circles in other places?
No, so actually, the reason we chose these zones is there's a requirement of 50% of the area that you're going to use for the overlay or for the district, because there's different ways of doing it. We chose the overlay because our current zoning already met it. There's other towns that have to create whole new zoning, whole new bylaws, which is a much longer process to allow for this and change density requirements. There's a longer process for other towns that don't meet those requirements. And ours are the Form-Based Code, and the reason we chose those is, one, for the, they already met the requirements, and two, 50% of it has to be within a mile of the MBTA station.
So if somebody owns a property within these... So, if somebody owns a property within these overlay zones, and they want to renovate that property, take out whatever is there, are they required to put in a high-density home?
They're not required to do anything, they're, they can choose to do, under the form-based code, whatever they would like under the use regulations, or they can apply under the MBTA, it's up to them.
You mentioned a whole bunch of grants and programs, are those the only, are the houses in those overlay districts the only one qualified for those sorts of grants and programs?
No, the town as a whole.
So, we will be eligible as a whole town to receive those various grants if we, uh, create these overlay districts?
Yes, and if we don't, then the town as a whole is not.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Conley?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Pauline Conley, Cambridge Street, um, that one right up there. Um, Danny, just a quick question, on the overlay district along, uh, Adams Street to West Street to, I can't tell the other demarcation, those are primarily commercial properties now? We have a restaurant, we have insurance agency, um, and a couple of other businesses. This overlay district allows those properties to become residential, if I'm understanding correctly, if the property owners decide to do that?
Um, so, if the, if it's within the overlay district and it's in that yellow area where our form-based code is, it currently already is allowed.
I understand, but right now, those are all commercial properties, there's no requirement or obligation for any of those businesses to convert should they choose to do something else?
No, there's no requirement.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, Mr. Diskin?
Yeah, Mr. Ruiz, just a quick comment, and you can clarify if I'm wrong. We put in two thousand eighteen, we put the form-based code district in, or two thousand nineteen, we might have amended it and added the West Main Street Village, how many applications have been approved in that area since we put that zoning in place?
Uh, none to my knowledge.
Correct, so, the fear of people coming in immediately and building in that area is probably overcome by the fact that the complications of even building under this code are not simple.
Correct.
They require a lot of administration by the applicant, a lot of cost involved, a lot of upfront costs, a lot of oversight by the planning board in any condition, so, I'm trying to take away the fear that people might feel that they're going to come into town immediately and change what's there, it's going to take a long time. E- e- even if we get an application, the application is viewed in, in a very clear and concise manner in town, and we have oversight from all our department heads, we have oversight from, on all the utilities, so, we will not take into consideration or approve a project in town that doesn't pass every standard that is needed both by the town and the state and the federal government if necessary. So, I'd, I'd like to take away the fear that, by approving this overlay district, that we're changing, really not changing anything, we're putting in place a zoning that the state would like to have in, in the MBTA communities to allow for more multifamily, but they're not forcing us to build anything at this point in time. The construction still is a long way away, and it needs a lot of oversight, which we feel comfortable that we can, we can take care of and handle appropriately in the town of air, we have the right people in the right places to supervise that, that type of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diskin. And Mr. Fay?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Uh, Jim Fay, one Victor Drive. It might help to, uh, have everybody understand that maybe fifteen and twenty years ago, we planned and allocated a space for, uh, Adult Material District. Probably many people in the room don't know where that is, and that's fine, but, that emphasizes the point that the planning board chair made and, and, uh, the presenter made, that although we allow something to happen, doesn't mean it's going to happen, it's that we may have to allow it to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. Further comments or discussion on this article? Ms. Stoddard?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, my name is Marion Stoddard, and I live at two oh four Autumn Ridge Drive, and, if, uh, this, uh, this bylaw were to pass, I would like to request that, uh, that any streets that are, are built in, uh, areas of town where there is, uh, uh, turtle habitat, that, uh, that the, uh, the curves along the streets be kept, uh, though, so that, uh, the turtles will be able to pass safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard. Any further discussion? Yep. Take your time.
Hi, I have a quick question, my name's Angelina Lyons, I live at seventy-nine Snake Hill Road. Um, I've seen a lot of the other towns are suing the state over this, um, I have two questions, um, is it possible to delay this vote until the outcome of that is decided? And, um, with all these extra housing and people, and is it going to overwhelm the schools, and what's going to happen then? I feel like we're going to be in a situation where then the taxpayers are maybe going for an override or something because of the state of the schools as they are now.
So, there were two questions, I believe?
Yes.
One is, can we wait until it goes through the courts in other towns?
Yes.
Okay, and the second was, um, impact upon all these people coming in, I don't know if Mr. Ruiz is...
So, um, as of now, I'd say no, that, uh, we shouldn't push this off, because, uh, we have to be in compliance by the end of this year, and that court case with Milton is going to take s- a quite a bit of time, um, I mean, if something were to happen where it did come back where it's not allowed, like, what the state is, uh, requiring us to do is not allowed, we could always come back and, uh, amend the bylaw to get rid of it. But if we don't, aren't in compliance by the, the end of this year, we would lose on, out on a lot of grants, and the town does depend on a lot of those.
Thank you, and I don't know that Mr. Ruiz is capable of, um...
Oh, uh, what was the second question again?
The second part of the question is, when we build these, will it overwhelm our schools and will we have a two-and-a-half? I think that's out of the scope of your expertise.
Yeah, that's outside of the scope.
Thank you. Other thought, other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, may I, may I respond?
I'm sorry?
May I respond to the question from the audience?
Oh, Mr. Krantz, chairman of the planning board.
Remember, again, there's no obligation to build anything, so, there's, there, there is no rush of people coming in, thank you.
Over here, sir?
David Kane, twenty-eight West Street, one B. In general, when large developments are built in town, when a developer builds several units, presumably there is some amount of capital improvements the town has to do, maybe we have to buy some fraction of a new police car, we have to expand the school some amount, how do we deal with that in general?
Typically, when a project of a large scale, uh, comes into a town that would have an impact that, like that, uh, typically there's like a feasibility study that would be required as part of that project, which would tell us what the impacts of that project would be on the town, and what I've seen in other towns is, there's typically a requirement for the applicant to pay for certain portions of the, um, uh, of the impacts, as well as showing us how much of the tax base that would increase to help, um, you know, offset those costs as well, so, it's not a straight answer I can give you, it's just one of those, it depends on the project and depends on how it's, uh, how impacted, what the impact is.
I know in a lot of places, you have to pay impact fees when you build a house or whatnot, is it safe to say we would simply charge those fees, and that way we would be able to make whatever capital improvements the development causes?
We're, we're beginning to get outside of the scope of the article?
Yeah.
Well, the, the answer, the answer is, that's negotiated, but, at the time of the application.
Yeah.
But this is a hypothetical, outside the scope of this article.
But it does sound like, basically, it's not going to cause a huge financial impact to the rest of us as taxpayers if somebody hypothetically builds a big development, is that fair to say?
That's, that's fair to say.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing nobody standing up. All those in favor of Article five, please say aye?
Aye!
Opposed? Article five passes unanimously, thank you. Article six, zoning bylaw amendment, inclusionary housing. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Air zoning bylaw by striking out the existing subsection three twenty ten dot three, inclusionary housing, and replacing with the new subsection three twenty ten dot three, inclusionary housing zoning bylaws as follows, and I'm not going to read the rest of this article for you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. DeVries, thank you for saving me.
I moved that the town vote to amend the Town of, uh, Air zoning bylaw by striking out the existing, uh, section three twenty dash ten point three exclusion, uh, inclusionary housing, and replacing it with a new section three twenty dash ten point three, inclusionary housing zoning bylaw, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Seconded? Moved and seconded, thank you, Mr. Ruiz, you've got the floor again.
All right, so, um, the town currently has an inclusionary housing bylaw, which is why it's an amendment, uh, so, the bylaw that we currently have has been in place for about eight years, and has never actually been triggered on any project, and so, uh, our working group, which actually came to town, the last couple of town meetings with amendments to try to promote more multifamily, more, um, affordable and, uh, big A affordable and little A affordable, uh, units, um, and this was a, uh, kind of the outcome of what that working group did, uh, we looked at our current bylaw and looked at it a way of how we could amend it to make it so that more projects would be tru- would actually, uh, apply under this bylaw, and promote more affordable units, um, to be, being created. So, Article six, the, one of the big things we changed here was what the applicability was, uh, before, our current one, it states that it must have five or more multifamily, uh, dwelling units, where, in our zoning bylaw, we actually, that re- that is a specific definition, so that's the only way it would be triggered, where here, what we changed was that it was a, a total of five or more dwelling units, so that we didn't specify multifamily. This would apply on any project that has five or more, uh, single, duplex, triplex, any type of d- development, but there's a total of five or more dwelling units on that property, so it would be triggered under that, as well as under subdivision, um, control, as well as the A and R process, and any other, uh, finding special permit through the special, through the ZBA or, uh, planning board. So, we just increased the ways that this pro- these, uh, this bylaw would be triggered on projects that would come before a planning board, or in some rare occasion, the zoning board.
Go to the next page?
So, section ten point three-three, um, currently our bylaw, we require twenty percent affordable, um, we're changing that down to ten percent to make it, uh, one, to be in compliance with the state mandate for the MBTA overlay district of the requirement of ten percent, also, to, uh, try to promote more developers to build under this section, um, and we found, we, we found, uh, different ways of trying to incentivize more development from these developers to provide more affordable units in alternate ways other than requiring twenty percent, uh, we require ten percent, but there's, built into this bylaw, there's other sections that would allow them to provide more affordable units above that ten percent. Um, so, the, in, in any development subject to ten point three, at least ten percent of the dwelling units shall be affordable housing, fraction of point five or more shall be rounded up to the next whole number, and fractions less than five shall be rounded down to the next whole number.
Can we go to the next page?
And so, uh, the methods of providing the affordable units, um, we would allow the, so, there's, there's two ways of providing this, you can provide them onsite, which, um, so, the way it would read is, so the construction of affordable units onsite, uh, for this project is preferred approach to creating affordable housing and shall be required for any development that includes twenty or more dwelling units, so if you have less than twenty dwelling units on a project, you would not be required to provide them onsite, there would be a payment in lieu, which I'll get to in the next section, um, so, however, if their, um, onsite affordable units shall not be required in any development that includes nineteen or, uh, nineteen or fewer dwelling units, also, the onsite affordable rental units shall be required onsite, so that means that if it's a project that is for sale, um, and you have under nineteen units, it would not be required to be, uh, for you to provide the ten percent, you could do the payment in lieu, which would then go to the Affordable Housing Trust, and they would be able to use that money towards, um, different projects to provide other, uh, affordable housing, so like possibly, uh, the NOAA project up on Fitchburg Road, doing a, uh, RFP with them, you know, typical, typically nonprofit, um, organizations to provide more affordable units, there's different mechanisms that we could use that additional money, uh, to buy properties as well, so, there's, uh, this just provides a, uh, an incentive to, uh, create more money to the Affordable Housing Trust, as well as being able to give them the ability to use that money towards, uh, creating affordable housing. So, and then the other section would be, is if there's, um, you could do the, uh, it's basically a mix of the two, of providing them onsite and doing the payment in lieu, or providing them offsite, so the offsite ones, um, this would be a very rare occasion, typically, it's not, uh, you don't see this very often, but there is an example I can give, like, um, the Milton project up, um, in Groton, they provided a, um, offsite, nine units on Westford Road, um, where they, the developer gave the town the property and built the units, nine affordable units on that property, uh, so that would be another way that they could provide the units. Can we go to the next? So, this is a breakdown of what the payment in lieu would be, so, if a, a developer were to come in and have eighteen units, um, but he wanted to do the market rate, um, they would fall, and then chose not to do the ten percent affordable, they would fall into these categories, and what they would do is, depending on what they sell the unit for, is what they would make the payment, uh, is how much they make the payment, so, if it's four hundred thousand dollars or less, it's going to be a ten thousand dollar flat fee, um, that would go to the Affordable Housing Trust for each unit that's sold. If, and then as you, uh, go up from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand, the sale price, two point five percent of the sale price would be the cost for the, which would be, would be the payment in lieu towards the Affordable Housing Trust, and then so forth, for six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand is three percent, and eight hundred thousand and greater is, uh, three point five percent, and as you see on the right-hand side, there's examples of what these payments would be for each of the market rate units, um, so, twelve thousand, five hundred, fifteen thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-four thousand, and so forth, it goes higher, so, the way, what we felt was, if, um, this is one way of, uh, trying to provide big A affordable, as well as little A affordable, and so, what, what that means is, big A affordable is the state requirement of ten percent, um, affordable units which have a deed restriction, um, and it's done, and since we're in Boston metro area, it's eighty percent of the average mean income, um, so, it's a, a lower rent, pre- um, rent and as well sale prices, but, if they were to do the pa- uh, payment in lieu, each unit would pay out these different amounts, go to the Affordable Housing, and this is a way to, once again, build up, um, the Affordable Housing Trust fund to provide for other projects to be done for affordable, as well as to kind to, kind of incentivize developers to keep their prices down, so they're not as high, because the higher you go, the higher your price is for the payment in lieu. Go to the next. And then the last section is density bonuses, so, this specific section was kind of, uh, a way we built in to help, one, help a developer, um, try to offset some of the costs of providing an affordable unit, because affordable units, they still have, you know, have the same costs as you're providing for a regular unit, but it's sold at a lower price and has a low, uh, or has a lower rental price, and it was just kind of a way to try to, uh, work with the developer, uh, so some give and take, um, so if a project had, um, so for each additional affordable unit over and above the ma- the minimum ten percent, the, uh, the planning board would be, uh, may approve three additional market rate units up to maximum density of seventy-five percent, so, for example, if a project came in with ten housing units, to be in compliance, they would have to provide ten percent, which is one unit, if the applicant were to provide... 10%, which is one unit. If the applicant were to provide, agree to provide two more affordable units, they would be, theoretically, the Planning Board would allow them to have up to six additional market rate units. And it's to try to help offset the costs. It's a give and take to work with developers, so that there's an incentive to the application and continuing development, as well as helping the town provide more affordable units for the residents. That's it for this one.
Thank you. Have discussion or questions on this article? Ms. Neary?
Thank you. I am a little confused. I didn't see, when you said this density bonus unit, I was envisioning you were talking about housing density, meaning providing open space for these units. So, I'm trying to picture where these units will go, and I'm seeing wall-to-wall houses, and affordability is, of course, is important, but are we building open space incentives into this plan?
So, this doesn't go into open space mechanisms, you know, they would still, this is just a bylaw trigger. So, they would still have to apply under Site Plan Review or an OSRD, which is Open Space Residential Development, and still have to meet open space requirements, which we have in our bylaw. This is just a mechanism for, of the affordable component of each project.
So, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not super familiar with the way our bylaws work, but are there incentives to do cluster development?
Yes, yes. So, if a project came before us under an OSRD, an Open Space Residential Development, they would still have to, they would provide 50% open space in their units they would have. This would just apply to that project as a whole, that 10% of that project would have to meet, would be affordable. So, it's kind of like a, just an additional bylaw that applies to that project. It's separate from it.
There are incentives, but not requirements, then, to include open space?
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I think you're talking about the same things. If it comes under, under OSRD, the incentive is 50% open space. In the other space, they can put more units through the inclusionary. That triggers for more units in the inclusionary. The open space does not be diminished by the inclusionary.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry. Ms. Dedeskin?
To Ms. Loring, through the moderator, and Danny, again, correct me if I'm wrong. We have not changed, with this bylaw change, any dimensional requirements that are in the current zoning. So, for instance, whatever dimensional requirements are in the district that you're going to build in, which include open space, are not changed. So, there's an ability to get more units if it works and still maintains the rest of the dimensions on the lot, meaning whatever the requirement is for open space, whatever the requirement is for side yards, for frontage, all the other dimensional requirements that are typical of developing a lot are still in place. So, you're concerned about, there's no incentive to get more open space, to get more units. Is that what your question was, basically? That does apply within the Open Space Residential Development. If they do an Open Space Residential Development, there is an incentive to get more units, but it doesn't apply under necessarily the inclusionary portion. So, we're attempting, basically, to get a bylaw that, again, has not been used at all, and we haven't got any affordable units out of that bylaw, to get a bylaw with some changes that may, in fact, get us some more affordable units. But we're not changing any dimensions or forcing any more density on a piece of land, other than what we have currently.
Thank you, Ms. Dedeskin. Ms. Conley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pauline Conley, Cambridge Street, again. I find a bit of contradiction, and I just want to clarify. The purposes of the bylaw are to increase the supply of housing that is permanently available to and affordable by low and moderate income households, yet we are reducing our now 25% requirement to 10%.
20% to 10%.
All right, 20 to 10. The last couple of permit committees I served on, we had 25% at The Willows, at Chandler Place.
That's a 40B.
I understand. I understand, but we at least had the 25%.
But, just to specify.
But regardless of whether it's 25 or 20, we are reducing the percentage.
No.
To encourage.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Danny.
So, under a 40B, that is a totally different application, and they require 25%. We're not changing that.
I understand that. But this bylaw is changing, you say 20%, I'll take your word at that, Danny, reducing it, to increase the supply, we're reducing the requirement. And in my mind, that math doesn't work.
Yeah. So, the reason that is, is, so, our bylaw's been in place for eight years, and it's never been used. So, it's too restrictive for developers. Developers look at it, and you can, I understand you may be, may not agree with that, but the fact that we haven't had an application shows that it is too restrictive. If it's, so the fact that the state is requiring 10%, we see this actually working in a lot of other towns. We want this bylaw to actually work, so we're trying to lower the requirement, so that people are actually incentivized to actually build. Right now, it's not working at all.
So, may I ask, Mr. Moderator, what is the affordable percentage at Panther Place? What was there, was there any requirement for that development to have an affordable percentage?
No.
What about Stratton Hill, which I understand is still under discussion?
No, because, there is no requirement, because technically, our bylaw would not, the current bylaw does not trigger on that project. But they, I believe that there is some discussion about that, they may.
If we approve this bylaw tonight, will that be retroactive?
No.
Okay. So, going forward, where there's very little development availability left in town, we may never even see this happen.
I don't agree with that statement.
Well, I hope you're right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. On this side, please.
Jeff May, 72 Pleasant Street. Starting off where Pauline was with this, 10.3.1, line B, says to encourage greater diversity of housing accommodations to meet the needs of air residents, and, next line, which puts it in conflict with 10.3.4, Section C, which is the selection process. What is the legality of the purpose of this article in 10.3.1? Because it's basically saying that only air residents are actually eligible for the selection process.
So, Alicia, I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn to Alicia. So, I think the question is, the selection process under the SHI units and the affordable deed restrictions?
Yeah, in the general provisions, the selection process, from my understanding, would be anyone that would be eligible, and therefore, how it's marketed to people that would be eligible, to get them to actually buy or rent in this town. But, the purposes of the bylaw specifically says only air residents. It's in direct conflict.
Can you show me where it says only air residents?
Well, it says, it's, it's line B. 10.3.1, line B. It says the needs of air residents.
Yeah, that doesn't mean only. So, it's, so it's, so here's an example. If someone who is looking to downsize, you know, a resident who already lives in town, this would provide additional affordable housing that they could downsize to. Anyone who already lives in town and wants to sell their unit and, you know, move into another unit, that's another way. But it's not only for air residents. It's a way to increase the ability for air residents.
We should strike the word "air" from that line, then. It's just residence. It's not.
Well, a res, to be a resident, you have to live in the Town of Air. So, it's.
I think.
But anybody under the selection process does not have to be from the Town of Air.
But they will be. They will be a resident of the air when they move in.
Well, when they, okay. But they can't move in if they can't afford it, and they're not marked as like that.
Town council.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Fair, you getting up to ask? Speak. Thank you.
I'm up here much more than I thought I'd be. When you think about the inclusionary and think about the 10% to draw more residents, if you will, keep in mind that when you're pushing people together in these tighter and tighter units, and IE density, that in my research, if you will, crime has a tendency to go up when you start pushing people closer together, and then you put them all together, and whether it be the MBTA zone, or anywhere else for that matter. But it seems to me that across the country and across the state, that seems to be the current thinking. Let's push everybody together for density for grand purposes, I'm sure, but be careful of the cost of doing that, in that crime has a tendency to rise.
Further discussion? Sorry, on this side, please.
I, Jacob Guzer, 30 Groton, Harvard Road. So, just like a big picture, like, theme of this, I kind of like have a question if I have my head wrapped around it correctly. So, previously, this only applied to multi-units, right? And now, really, it's like, in the scenario, say, you build a cul-de-sac of McMansions, they have to pay their fair share or build a unit for affordable housing. That's basically the spirit of this? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Article seven, zoning bylaw amendment, subsection 320, 2.0, definitions. I'm not sure where to stop reading this, so I'm going to turn to Mr. Copeland.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Air zoning bylaw, Section 320-2.0, definitions by amending the current definition of affordable housing and adding a new definition of air affordable housing trust, as printed in the warrant, but changing the words October 26, 202, to October 26, 2020, and with deletions shown and strike-through and additions shown in bold underline and read by the moderator.
Seconded.
Thank you. Discussion on this article? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article eight, zoning amendment, update of the town's zoning map, and I think we're going to see the map again. Full, full multivisual tonight, okay, guys? Danny, are your legs asleep yet?
Nope, not yet.
To see if the town will vote to approve the revised Town of Air zoning map available on the town's website at www.yer.us/townmeeting, and on file in the town clerk's office showing the addition of the MBTA multifamily overlay district, or take any action thereon in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. DeVries?
I move that the town vote to approve the revised Town of Air zoning map to show the addition of the MBTA multifamily overlay district, as shown during the motion presentation and read by the moderator.
Seconded. Thank you. Any discussion on this article? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article passes unanimously, Article eight passes unanimously. Thank you. Article nine, street acceptance, Shaker Pond Road. To see if the town will vote to accept as a public way the road known as Shaker Pond Road as heretofore laid out by the Select Board and shown on a plan of land entitled Shaker Mill Pond Definitive Subdivision Plan Open Space Residential Development dated July 2019, prepared by Places Associates Incorporated, recorded with the Middlesex County, Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds as Plan 362 of 2021, and on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or easements in said Shaker Pond Road for all purposes for which public ways are used in the Town of Air, and any drainage, access, utility, and/or other easements related thereto, or take any action therein or in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Copeland?
I move that the town vote to accept the layout of Shaker Pond Road as a public way, as printed in the warrant, and as shown during the motion presentation, and read by the moderator.
Seconded.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this article? Seeing none. All in favor of Article nine?
Aye.
Opposed? Article nine passes unanimously. Article 10. I believe, Chief, thank you. Again, to save me from reading the entire article, Article 10, home rule petition, act relative disability pension and critical incident stress management for violent crimes. Ask Mr. DeVries.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation titled Act Relative to Disability Pension and Critical Incident Stress Management for Violent Crimes, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. And I believe we have a presentation from Chief Gill.
Hi, good evening. This is a, an article that I wish I wasn't up here presenting tonight. This involves one of my officers a couple of years ago, that was violently injured while doing his job, trying to take somebody into custody. So, what we have back in April of 2022, Sergeant Kularski was trying to take somebody into custody. And while him and his partner were trying to do that, the person they were taking into custody took a baton from the officer's belt and struck Sergeant Kularski in the head, immediately knocked him to the ground, and required medical, being transported to a hospital. So, over the course of the next couple of years, next slide, over the course of the next couple of years, Sergeant Kularski was being treated with the hopes of coming back to work. And a whole bunch, he was going through a whole bunch of physical therapy, medical, medication therapy, something to try and get him past what was, what was being called a traumatic brain injury. The, but unfortunately, next slide, but unfortunately, he wasn't, wasn't going to be able to come back to work, according to his medical team, which was devastating to Sergeant Kularski, who was trying so hard to come back. So, while all this, while he's trying to recover, the Massachusetts Legislature was working on a bill to, and this bill's been back and forth for numerous years. And for whatever reason, this, this bill took some traction and started to kind of make some headway. I signed on to being one of the chiefs that were kind of pushing this through the legislature to try and get it to happen, because this was going to absolutely benefit Sergeant Kularski if we could get it to pass. So, all these things are happening at once. So, in, at the, at the very end of the session, the, the law was ultimately signed by the governor, but it didn't get an emergency preamble to this. And some of the facts, some of the big thing about this law is, it covers an officer who's been violently attacked, and because of their injuries, can't return to work. And it's not just officers, it's people in public safety, anybody in the public safety realm. So, it gets signed into law, but it doesn't have this emergency preamble, so it doesn't go into effect for 90 days. So, things simultaneously happening, Sergeant Kularski is going through the disability retirement process through the Middlesex County Retirement Board, which, at the time, there is no other mechanism other than to call this an accidental disability. And, and it's, and the fact of the matter is, this isn't an accidental disability. This isn't somebody that slipped and fell and, you know, and hurt themselves and had to go out. This was somebody that was violently attacked. So, that this law kind of taking, you know, taking hold was really important to this. But unfortunately, it's still. But unfortunately, it's still, it hasn't gone into effect yet. It doesn't, it, as of right now, the bill is just waiting to go into effect, which you can see is going to be on October twenty-nine, twenty, tomorrow. But, so he's moving through the retirement process. Next slide. The, the problem is, is we don't know, because they, they haven't been able to make an affirmative decision yet, because it's not in play, is will he be covered by this law? And we're hopefully going to be able to find that out in the November meeting of the Retirement Board, when they're going to ultimately take up and make a decision, take up his case and make a decision. But, so we're kind of left in, like, what happens if? So that brings us to tonight. So tonight is asking this body to approve a home rule petition that would ultimately direct our legislature to put a bill on the floor and ask the retire, not ask the retirement, direct the, direct the retirement board to have him included into the, the language that encompasses chapter one forty-nine. So really, what we're talking about is kind of a belt and suspenders kind of idea here is that we're looking for him to be covered, one hundred percent, somebody that cannot return to work. He cannot go back to a family life that he knew prior to April 2022. We're looking to take care of somebody who ultimately gave their life to this town. So what we're looking for is for this body to take care of him. Next slide. Yeah, so we just talked about this. So if his application is precluded, we're looking for this body, this, this, to, to help push that through the legislature. Next slide. So some of the questions I've been hearing is, what's the cost of this? If we approve this tonight, there is no direct cost that comes out of this. What'll happen is, the town receives its assessment from the Retirement Board, just like it does every other year, and that his, this retirement would be included at that assessment. What, what is important to take away from this is whether he's included in the chapter one forty-nine portion of this, or if he's included in the home rule petition portion of this, it will be the same assessment. We're not, there's going to be nothing more. So it's, we're just looking for him to get covered one way or the other. And that's the, that's the essence of it. I'm just looking for this body to take care of an officer that gave their being to the, to this town, and, and can't return to that sense of normalcy. So I'm ready to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any discussion or questions? Yes, please.
I would like to get some instructions on rewording one section of this, which is section four. It says, if Andrew Kularski is married at the time of his retirement, then upon his death, should his spouse survive, the Middlesex County Retirement Board shall pay her. That should be changed to Andrew Kularski's spouse. We're making an assumption here. And to be appropriate and proper, we should open up all opportunities. So I would like to, is it a motion? I don't know how to do this. Mr. Moderator, can you?
You're moving to amend? You're moving to amend the article?
I would like to make a motion to amend the article, section four, to change to her, to, shall pay Andrew Kularski's spouse.
Hold on, please, make sure. You all said? I was going to ask you, would you please write your edits and bring it forward, just so we make sure we have it? And while that's happening, let's take the other question.
Hi, I've been Taylor. I'm three Anne Guard Lane. I just first wanted to say, pay my respects to Officer Kularski for what he did for our community. I do, I'm curious, though, is this something that's, this is going to be taken to effect for all public service personnel? And going forward, if this ever happens again, this will be instated to all of them. Is this full coverage, their pension would apply to a hundred percent if they went into retirement at the maximum age? Is this something that they would be paid for as if they would be working the whole time, say, if they were injured a year into the, a year into their service and paid all the way through? This is more of a question about the home rule petition in chapter one forty-nine, but it's something that I'd like to know before making a decision about this petition.
So if I understand, the question is, does, does this hundred percent go beyond his natural retirement date?
Yes.
Right, so that, that is spelled out in here, and it is spelled out in chapter one forty-nine, that once he reaches his required retirement date, which would be attaining the age of sixty-five, then it, he would revert back into the, to the, the retirement system as it is.
All right.
So it's assuming that he works, he, he works his entire career.
Okay, all right. And then he would receive the retirement that he actually worked, or the one that was given to him through this petition?
No, it would be until, when he, at sixty-five, then he would revert to as if he's been working all along. So it's not penalizing him for getting injured. It's, it's, they're just saying, we're assuming you're going to work till sixty-five.
And did he express any interest in that was beforehand?
What, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering if he had plans to.
What's that?
Did you know if he had plans to? That's all. It's, it's kind of a silly question, but I'm, I'm just curious.
I think we all plan on working as long as we can.
No, no. Here, changes happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So, excuse me, just with you for a moment. So I have the, the proposed amendment. I believe you're making this a motion, Ms. Neary? So the motion would read, if you go to page nineteen of your warrant, the second line, the end of the second line would say, Middlesex County Retirement Board shall pay Andrew Kularski's spouse seventy-five percent, and strike the word "her" from that. Is that what you would like to have in the motion? We would need a second on that motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any further questions?
Yes, James Lee Allen, Pond Street. I have one question. If, if there's another officer in a similar situation that this happened to, would they, hopefully, will they be covered, or would their town have to do home rule like we do?
So that, that's a great question. So up until tomorrow.
Yeah.
This, every town had to do this. And to put it in perspective, since the people that I've been working with to try and get this legislation passed, it's been under fifty, fifty officers throughout the Commonwealth.
Okay.
So it's, it's a rare instance that is, there's a violent injury that will ultimately put somebody out. So what this is, what this new law is doing is, is taking away that this mechanism that we don't have to go through anymore. So it's, it's taking what we're trying to do and keeping it into just statute, this is what's going to cover our officers.
Good.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
One quick comment, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I know Sergeant Kularski. His dream was to be a chief, and this injury prevented that from happening. And please don't anyone suspect he is asking anything more than what he is entitled to. Please pass this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Proud to say it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to dissolve, please? A motion to dissolve, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Dissolve, please. Thank you. May I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, dissolving the meeting?
Aye.
Unanimous, I declare the meeting. Dissolve.